So, good evening. I have been looking forward to this meeting for a really long time. And so, Rita, it's so good to see you. Yay. And so, for those who are not normally here, it's great. Good to have a party. And I think that the board has been really wanting to have, to see some of the teachers, so to see so many of you and is just above and beyond. It's great. So I just want to let you know, I was waiting for a quorum. I had received my quorum. And so I am going to officially start the meeting. And today is May 8th. It is 6:04. And it is my honor and privilege to start the Grotten Board of Education Committee of a whole meeting. That is my call to order. I'll take a motion to accept the minutes of April 17th, the 2023 meeting. I've got, and I've got a second from Andrea. So Dean and Andrea, Ms. Jones?
Got it.
Do I have any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the approval of the meeting minutes of the April 17th meeting, please say aye.
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 Abstain? That motion has carried. Thank you. The rest of our time together is to go through the reading, our reading K-3 program. That's kind of why you guys right here. It's not like you're going to teach us how to play volleyball. So don't worry. We're going to be really specific about that. It's so good to see you. So let me just orient a little bit, and then Susan, I'm gonna like pass it on to you. But we had, this has really been spurred on by several different things, as far as I can tell. There's been a lot, lot of things in the news. I'm sorry, but my friend Andrea has become like my cough drop junkie. And so she just put 10 in front of me. So that's why I started to laugh. I'm not laughing at you guys. And so it, part of it is because it's, it's very political right now. Through the nation, everyone is really very concerned about the reading skills of kiddos. Hi Bev, it's good to see you. The reading skills of the, of the people across the nation. But in our regular, regular board meeting in March, we had several parents come and talk about their concerns about the K-3 reading program, and specifically about the waiver that Susan brought in. And so, or sent to the state. And my understanding, it is one, it was one request of a waiver out of how many school districts?
100. There were 99. When I was at the state Capitol, 99 were submitted on the due date. 50 had asked for an extension and did not want to take one of the reading programs that they were mandating. And so, you know, so last I knew, I called Fran Webinowitz, and she said she's in charge of Connecticut Association of School Superintendents. And I actually spoke with her today. And there were, you know, out of 169, although they add up those districts differently. So I've had different numbers for the final number, but there were at least 150 or more that had asked for a waiver or extension.
So something, so something is happening. And so what we made the decision was, as a board, is for us to have a much better understanding about the K-3 learning program, and to hear all the good work that you do. I, a shout out to both Susan and Phil and her staff. One, for being here tonight, for creating a sense of helping us understand literacy in the K-3. But the packet of information that we got was incredible. It was, it was informative. It was, I'm going to use the word dense, but not in a, not in a, I couldn't read it way. But I also am just so very excited. You guys may not know, but there was a glossary put together. And for those of us who are not in education, I just am so, so very appreciative of that.
Frequently asked questions. And those are the kind of things I'd like to add to our website, where we really have truly put up all the information. And I think we should continue, because I think that it needs to be out there for public to see.
So, that is the, that is the backdrop. That is the field that I'm hoping that we're going to operate in tonight. And so at this point, I am going to have Susan and her staff speak with and to the board around this program, or the programs.
So Dr. Piazza and I have really been looking forward to this opportunity to address the board and the public and anybody who's out there online. To talk a little bit about our K-3 Grotten Public Schools phonics and the curriculum work that's been done, been worked on this year. Really, it was early on in the year that teachers were coming to me and talking to me about recognizing gaps. Especially after the pandemic. And I know people don't want to hear about the pandemic anymore, but especially speech and language was really impacted. And phonemic awareness was impacted, and phonics was impacted. And then, of course, there was legislation from the state. And really, there's nothing that we can't believe in, in the state. They want all the same things we all want. We want our children reading. We want them reading in first grade. We want them really reading proficiently by third grade. You don't want to wait any longer, because if you do, that means that it really can have concerns later on. So our teachers had come to us. We heard about the shifting of the balance. I bought the book. Beth, you know, and Katie had also bought the book. So now we bought the book for all of our teachers. And we have a book study that we're going to be doing some PLC, so everybody understands this. There's a master class done by Connecticut Association of School Superintendents and the CST, Connecticut State Department of Ed. And we are in the third cohort. And that includes superintendent, assistant superintendent, director of pupil personnel, our principals, our literacy coaches. So our whole literacy team will be able to participate in this. It's a five full day. And then you have a designated specialist consultant, reading consultant, and superintendent who comes out to the district. And then they helped with the implementation, and they just really monitor and see and answer any questions that we have. So we're really feeling very good that that is happening. I want to also go back a little bit to say that our district, and I had Val here, because she, you know, she has been a principal in all our schools. She helped me with the first grant in literacy that we wrote. And she was working side by side with the evaluator, monitoring the terrific growth and development in the data. So the district has always believed though in phonics instruction and phonemic awareness. The literacy curriculum was actually developed, redeveloped in 2014, 15, based on the Common Core standards or the Connecticut Core standards. And, and always included the essential foundational skills to assist students as readers, writers, and speakers. This is what was sent to the state department as our re-labor, along with some of the new things that we were going to work on. One of the things that we've been looking on in this development of the curriculum in phonics is the U Fly foundational. And this has been purchased for our, our teachers. We've gotten them for our literacy specialists to take a look at. You're going to hear more about that, because we have a couple of teachers here who are also literacy specialists now, consultants. And they have absolutely tried some of these out, and so have some of our teachers, and have found really good results with that. So we've learned a lot in this year. I would say it's really been a wonderful year of learning. Not that we didn't know anything. We knew a lot. But I think we've learned even more. So really, the strategies that have always been used in Grotten and are espoused to are professional development, continuous ongoing professional development, embedded coaching for our teachers, using decodable tests. So we've really purchased a plethora of decodable texts to add to our classroom libraries. And this is really important. Finding a universal screener that really works. We've always used Dible State. But it's been more for when a child needs to have intervention. So using that with all kids and gathering that data. And I think we shared with the board recently, the data that we were gathering from there. We're going to be doing an end year data, and I've heard a couple of teachers across the room who can't wait to see how their kids have done on that screener. Because they've really been noticing all along how their readers are growing this year. And, and they needed to grow. We need to accelerate learning. There had, you know, been a time where speech and language was taught behind a mask, and things were blurred, and kids were here half time. So we really need to accelerate their learning to make sure that they're ready to go. But I just go back to the belief statements, you know, what that legislation was and what it wanted for all. We believe in this. We believe, I believe it as a superintendent. We believe it as a staff. But we want all students to be reading by the end of first grade and independently by third. We realize that there are some obstacles and disabilities. And Denise is here to talk to us a little bit about dyslexia and a couple other reading disabilities. But we need to give students more support beyond the core instruction to meet their needs. And there's a lot of kids that do get intervention or have resource early on to help support them. And sometimes a differentiated instructional technique. One size never fits all. If you've had two children, one may be reading right away, and you don't even know how they picked it up, and the other might not be. And, you know, they, they learn to walk and talk and tie their shoes all at different times. So we know that in childhood development, there is a continuum, and that we just have to be aware of that. But then we also have to give the kids what they need if they don't have it. So. We believe in a strong literacy curriculum, and that's what we have been working on, making it even stronger as we shift the balance to more structured literacy approach. And we also believe that school leaders also need to be knee deep into this work. So hence the master class. My biggest belief, though, is about the staff you see around this room are highly qualified teachers, literacy interventionists, reading consultants, special educators, and tutors, all need to be available for our students. That's the biggest bang. I say that at budget time, but that's what we give our kids. And so I'm really proud to be here. I don't think there's a magic bullet, but I do think that there is a pathway to making something much better. And we're going to show you some of that tonight, some of that hard work that has gone into this. It's not all done yet. I don't think it's ever done. I think we're constantly making improvements and making things better. So, and then Phil, you're going to just talk a little bit about some research.
Well, I was just gonna make a point. And one of my functions, I believe, is to, and one of my, you know, as twisted as it is, one of the things I really love to do a lot is really look at the research and look at what's available there. I know, you know, when Kim said it at the start, we gave you a lot of information, right? And how many times did I say, wow? We're giving them a lot, a lot to read. So we do realize that there's a lot out there, and I'm sure there's a lot more that. So I constantly try to find out where the research is coming from. I try to do a little bit of deeper dive as to who bringing the research to a table. I listen to, you know, all sides, podcasts, and I, I want to be that conduit for, for all of you here. I try to be that for the teachers and the principals and for Susan to sort of bring it to the table to help us get better. Because I do, that's one of the things I want to keep doing, is trying to find ways for us to improve our instruction, you know, for our kids. I just wanted to bring, you know, one of the articles that Susan provided for you. It's called Phonics First, question mark. And it's, it's from, the excerpt here is from something called the Marshall Memo that we use. It's a great resource, because it does take all the stuff that's out there and gives us nice summaries of that. And of course, it always gives you a link to the article it comes from.
And the full research piece.
Right. And so I've been trying to do a deeper dive on that. This is, you know, written by three people, Ryan King, Karulby, and Risco, you know, from Clemson, University of Kentucky, and Vanderbilt's, you know, future education and, and leadership departments. And it just really, I think it gives a nice balanced look at both sides of the issue. It really talks about stuff that I know we've been reading a lot about, and in the literature that I've read, talks a lot about the three, you know, the really three keys, which I know you're going to hear more about later, is the scope of things, you know, which is, you know, what we're going to be teaching. The sequence, which is very important in terms of the order that things are going to be taught. And then, of course, how it's going to be taught, you know, having those solid instructional routines in the classroom. Again, I think you'll hear some of that this morning. So I really want to, I really want to bring your focus to that as you're listening tonight. And really, my hope is that we'll continue to, to educate ourselves and listen to the research. And I'll try to provide those. And if you have research you want to send to me, I would love to see it and break it down for the board as well in future meetings. I really want to listen. I love listening to the people that are going to be presenting to you tonight. They're very talented, and they're very skilled in what they do. And I think you'll hear that in, in all that they present tonight. And then, you know, we're always, you know, I'm one of those people that are always wary too of, of different things. I try, like I said, I try to do a deeper dive, see where things are coming from. We know this topic could be highly politicized. There's a lot of money to be made on both sides of the equation. So again, that's why I try to look at who's, who's bringing the research to the table and how deep that research goes. So I really just encourage you to listen to our plan, you know, and ask your questions. We collect those questions, I think, and we'll keep getting your answers as we move forward. But this was, I've done a deeper dive into the article itself. It's about 20 some pages long. But if it's something somebody who's interested in kind of walking through, you know, I could definitely do that with you. But I thought that was, this was good to include, because again, it seemed to be someone who didn't have anything to gain on either side. And it sort of focused on the actual teaching and still the sequence like I talked about. I do want to hand it off to the, to the people who, you know, are doing the work and in front of our kids. And I'd like to invite them to the table, if that's okay.
Absolutely. I, I don't mean for us, there might be people who don't want to be so squishy, and I'm probably understanding of that. But especially if, if there's a part of you that are breaking up in terms of presentations, so please come join us at the table. I mean, more than welcome to stay by the window, but whatever you are the most comfortable with. Thank you. You guys know how they, they figure this out. They said, we got this. Yeah.
Yeah. Kim, do you have the presentations, or I can do it from mine? It doesn't matter to me.
It would probably be easier on yours.
I will do that then. No problem.
Thank you so much.
So I think while we're transitioning, if you guys could just, I'll do a, I will do a quick introduction for myself. There are several board members who are on that I would also would love for them to introduce themselves, but I'll start at this end.
Eon T. Fox, board member.
Kim. And Kim Shepherdson Watson. And then Bev, you're the first on my, on our screen. There you are.
Bev Washington.
Thank you, Bev. William?
Thank everybody for coming and sharing whatever knowledge you are going to give to us tonight. Thank you very much.
Hey, it's William Horgan. Yes, and I'm with Beverly. I'm very excited about hearing everybody's input.
Thank you. And Jay?
Jay Whiteloff. And again, thank you all. We've been looking forward to this meeting for some time.
I do know that Liz will not be able to join us tonight. And Matthew said that Matthew Shulman, who is our ninth board member, will be arriving probably in about 40 to 45 minutes. So he'll be here as well. You'll actually, well, Liz is not here, but you'll have either nine or ten, which is great. So.
And you guys might want to share who you are and what school you're from.
Yeah, that would be great.
My name is Sarah. I'm Brown.
And I'm Ally Merrill. I'm from St. Peter's.
Hi, I'm Carrie Laub. I'm also from St. Peter's.
And Cory Martin, from St. Peter's.
Awesome. And we have two other teachers over here. Beth Horler and. But that's not your name. You need to use that. Yes, please. Let's do that.
Kristoff, my principal at Tappan Smolus.
Inron, open to St. Peter's.
Who likes to raise her voice a lot. Yeah. Your, your, Johnson. We just wanted to make sure everyone gets introduced. Glad that you're here. All right.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, we're missing a vital person today. So Brenda Brownlee is the fifth reading specialist. But I wanted to start by saying like, what Susan said, this year has been stressful, to say the least. And we feel that way. And we need, I mean, I think we, you know, really, and the team talk about how we can alleviate that stress. And I will say, now that it's towards the end of the year, that strength has deep roots. And I thank Erin and Amanda and Ally and Brenda, who's not here, like we, you know, feel really lucky to have collaborated and made such great work in one year. And we're excited to show that and also show you what we're, what we're doing. So. So as far as our agenda, because it's a lot, when we're all together, you know, we always go back to the why, you know, why are we doing this? Why, why do students need this at certain times? So we wanted to start with that and give you some of the things that we utilize and find really important in our work. Then we want to move into our commitment, which is completely there. And we wanted to tell you a little bit about what we have committed to this year and then what we're moving forward with. And then we'll share what we've been working on. We have a lot to share, a lot to tell you. And then looking ahead, we're very aware that there's a lot of levels and tiers of change that go into this. You know, we're talking about changing communication and habits and, and all kinds of things. So we just want you to know that, you know, that there's a need for that to happen in our curriculum. And we want our curriculum to be implemented successfully. So we want to share, you know, when we look ahead, we want to share that forward thinking. Like we really have tried to anticipate, and we look most all those under, as we think about how this work can be sustainable and, and, you know, long term for Brown. So the Star Road Reading Rope, this is very familiar to other educators, and especially others reading specialists. This is our guide to instruction and intervention. It's a visual representation of all the strands that are really interconnected and dependent upon each other, dependent upon each other to make a successful reader. So when we really think about the why we are doing this, I know this work, it can be broken down really easily. So kids need to, students, readers need to be able to decode, and they need to be able to copy. And so those two components, that word recognition and the language comprehension, they, they are part of our tier one literacy instruction. These be at in Grotten, all this. So a lot of us, you know, this is very familiar to all of your teachers who are. As a team, you really moved our lens to those youngest years, those, those K-2 readers, because we know those foundational skills, phonological awareness and phonics are so vital to even move into the language comprehension. Because if they're not making meaning out of words, they're not making meaning out of text. So this is like, this is our map. This is our guide. And we are in a room together, and we're talking about ideas. And looking at the fact that all the time, remember the why. You know, we always go back to, you know, remembering the why and all those strands together make a strong rope. But if one's afraid, if one's not strong, that's where, you know, as educators, we need to go back and, and repair. So we're really committed to the work. We've said that. We talk about it all the time. And I almost want to call this why our non-negotiables, really, because when we sit down and we plan, what comes up all the time, teacher feedback. Every time we've gotten together, whether it was September or now, what do the teachers think? What are the teachers doing? How do we go back and ask the teachers? What are the teachers think? Like, we're constantly trying to put a hope on what the teachers need, how the teachers feel, so that we can then come together and do that work for them. But it's plotted throughout the year. It's not just a, what do they need at the beginning of the year? We are constantly, you know, trying to include them when it feels, when, when, when we feel like we have something to share with them and something we need to do that for. So that, that is something that we're. Thanks. Thank you to Susan and Phil for just allowing us the time to meet and plan. We are very aware.
Any resources you ask for.
How much our principals have sacrificed for us to get together. We sacrificed, and, and it's, we, the feeling of being, wanting to be in two places at the same time is very difficult. But we know where we are and where we need to be. And I'm just really, you know, proud of our team for committing to that. So thank you, Susan and Phil, for giving us room. And our administration, I mean, again, a non-negotiable, as much as we think about the teachers, we think about how do we bring this back to the principal? How do we bring this back to our admin so that we can sit and stand side by side and deliver this information? Because it's what we live and breathe every day. But we're very aware that, that they, you know, have a whole building to take care of. And they need to think about how everyone's going to get this information. Trusting the research and.
Let me.
Oh, yeah.
So, one second.
Yeah.
Let me just, how would you like us to, would you like just to have like a, like present for a couple of minutes and then see if there's any questions? Do you want us to, do you want us to raise our hands? No, that is.
Get through the whole slide?
Sure, that's fine. Yeah. So let's do that. So trusting the research and the resources, we're going to speak to them a little bit more, but really going back to all that, you know, evidence-based scientific research that led us into these conditions. And then those frequent meetings of the ELA team, really committed to continuing those and trying to figure out a way that we can, you know, balance, balance our jobs in the building. But we're definitely going to need to.
So Rita?
Yeah, my question. Couple of them. How are your students? How is your place presented to you? How do you work with students?
Yeah.
You know, and then can you take them out of the classroom?
No, absolutely. Yeah. So at the beginning of the year, and I speak, I speak for all of us, we're very, you know, similar in our, in our jobs and, and how we present, you know, how we get data and then choose our groups. But our models are different at different buildings based on the university building. But, but the majority of us look at the data that comes in at the beginning of the year. And we have screens that we put into place with students at the beginning of the year, whether it's depending on the grade level, like whether it's a phonological awareness screen or a phonics screen or comprehension screen. And then we take that data, and then we decide which kids are our tier one students, kids that we stay in the classroom and instruct, and which kids are those kids that we're going to have on a fixed cycle where we pull out of the classroom in the afternoon in what we call like our SRBI time route. Because as we know, like that instruction, that intervention needs to be, we can afford it to be for the middle of the day. So there's this, there's this pocket of kiddos that are our, our lowest intervention, where the gap is so big, that then we're doing small group intervention outside of the classroom in the hopes that they'll transfer those skills back into the classroom.
But they don't remove them from the core? They go into the core to support?
And then they take them for additional time? Everyone's pulling at the same time, especially at math intervention. It's, it's still good for us.
And I noticed that there's like two, I think, do all of us still have two or?
Yeah, one, you know, one. Carrie, my classroom teacher.
But they have interventionists as well, Rita. So they really are part coach, part interventionist, part enrichment specialist. So they do coach too, but they do spend a lot of time with intervention and helping support the whole intervention team with the principles.
So you are five, one of each, one of each.
Bev?
Thank you, Kim. Can you tell me how this plan, I don't know if you want to call it a plan, but how this is different from what you're already doing?
Absolutely. Yeah, Beverly, if it's okay, if you don't mind, we're getting to that slide in a minute. So, so I want to write down your question or remember it, but we're actually moving into the slide that might be helpful. So, so if you can move on to the next slide, I think you might answer your question.
Okay, so this is kind of a heavy slide, so hopefully the team will help me out with this. This is what we've been doing all year, what we've been working on. So actually, Carrie and I came to Susan in the beginning of the year, and we sat down with her, and we said, we need to do something about our phonics instruction. Do we have your blessing to explore some different curriculum? Because what we're using right now, we don't feel like meeting the needs of the students in our building. And we met as a district, and representatives from each school came together, and we shared our concerns about what phonics instruction looked like currently, what we could do better. We brainstormed all the things we would like to have in a perfect curriculum. And then we started really doing some research. So we looked at. really doing some research. So we looked at foundations, which a lot of teachers in Brighton were familiar with. And we looked at the scope and sequence and the routines that teachers really liked in foundations. They liked that it was easy to implement and that the students were familiar with the routine. They didn't have to come up with a new lesson plan every day. They just knew how to teach phonics and they could do it every day. Um, they also liked the magnet boards and some of the other materials that came with foundation. We looked at Wilson, um, and we looked at the scope and sequence and made sure that what we, what we ended up making had all of the phonics features that were part of Wilson as well. Um, we did take a deeper dive into the Teachers College Phonics Curriculum and we recognized what we had concerns with and we pulled out the things that we really liked about it. Um, but ultimately, we kind of fell into this University of Florida curriculum, which Carrie left had heard about, um, from one of her professors. And it is a wonderfully written scope and sequence that does have all of the phonics features that are expected students in kindergarten to second grade to be introduced to during their time in school. Um, it has routines that are built in that are very teacher-friendly. It covers phonological awareness. It has heart words or sight word instruction built in. It has decodable word lists, it has decodable passages. It has, um, many opportunities for review and practice built in. So it's very user-friendly. And Susan said, you know what, if this is something that sounds like it's going to be good for your classes and good for teachers, let's try it out. So Carrie jumped on board right away and I'll let her speak for a little bit and then we'll go back to, yeah, she, yeah, she was clearly piloted.
Yeah.
What it looks like. Yeah, I did. And I should also note that, I mean, my whole grade level team was really on board with this and I'm just really grateful that we just had an entire grade level and teachers, you know, both above and below us.
And I just want to add that we really ask people to commit as a grade level because I think it's really essential when we're trying new things to kind of do it together and our teachers do that anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so it really was a, a team effort. Um, and I will say at first I was, I was a little bit concerned that kids would find this boring, right? That, you know, phonics time would become something that wasn't fun. Um, you know, the program that we had been using involved, you know, a cute little mascot. There were a lot of opportunities for, you know, like we would sit and like maybe play a game on the rug and that was fun. But I was struggling to notice whether our kids were transferring that into what we need them to be doing in text, in writing. And that was the piece that was really the thing, thing Ally and I really were noticing that. Um, so I was a little bit nervous at first. Um, and I can tell you that it couldn't be further from the truth. My kids love phonics time. Um, and the power of, is that they are recognizing that they, they all can read. Um, we're really giving them the tools that get them excited to become true leaders. Um, the program is really multi-sensory, so, uh, there's opportunities for visual, auditory, tactile learning. Uh, they have these great letter boards that we use. Um, you know.
She made herself.
I did. Because I was really excited about it. Um, but, you know, so they're building words. It's, it's totally systematic. Uh, the routines are predictable. So there is no question about what we do during phonics time. It's 20 minutes of our day, um, and it's probably the most important time of the day in first grade. So there's no room for, we don't have time to fit phonics in, or, oh, I didn't have this material today. I don't think we're getting to that part of the lesson. Um, and, and the kids are just really, really excited about it. Um, and then I think the most powerful piece for me has just been the transfer is that I have kids who are, are looking at, you know, the, the sound wall that we've built. Um, and then the tiles on their board and they're saying, oh, there's that AI vowel team. I know that long vowel sound. And look, here it is in my book today. Um, and so it's really, really empowering for kids. Um, and then not only in reading, but in writing too. Um, I think teachers struggle sometimes with spelling. That's sometimes the last thing to come. Um, and this has given kids the tool to both decode and to spell. So it really is addressing that piece of the rope, right? And that, in that word recognition, um, with the phonological awareness and with the sight recognition, that these words are becoming part of their, their site vocabulary. Um, and I just want to share really quickly because I think this is all great. Um, but what you, what really was the most powerful for me is the goal I'm seeing with my actual students. Um, so I had just brought a sample of work from a kiddo I had asked the parent today, but could I just share your child's work? Because this is really a testament to, um, the kind of instruction, um, that we've implemented. Um, so this was a student who was reading pretty significantly below grade level at the beginning of the year. Um, you know, I'm not going to talk about levels, but I'm just going to kind of give you, show you an example of the kind of book that he was reading. You know, some sight words, it was patterned. Um, he was really over relying on the picture and not really attending to print. Um, and he's now reading at grade level. Um, so he's now, you know, reading books, you know, like tree books, books that you could find in the library. And there's just nothing more exciting or powerful than a kid that can pick up a book at a library and bring it to you and just be so happy to be able to read it. Um, and that's because he's attending to print. He's looking at words. He knows what those parts of words are.
Did he use a lot of decodable text in the beginning?
Tons.
Yeah. So that's the other thing, making sure that we have plenty of those decodable texts for lessons.
Yeah. This is first grade. Um, so tons of decodable texts. And the nice thing is that this is tier one, right? So this is what I'm doing with all of my class in phonics time. But then, you know, this child was within an intervention group, but then he was also in my, you know, small reading group. So we were able to take what we were doing with tier one. And even though at the time, the phonics was a little bit above his instructional level, the beauty of it was that we were talking about looking at words, right? That, you know, they're, all the parts of the book are important, but the first thing you have to look at are those letters. We have to know what those, you know, the sounds of those letters, um, make. And, um, and then, and then that gap starts to close and close and close and close. And, um, and so, you know, and now he's excited. I mean, even in his spelling, it's just beautiful, you know?
Who's more excited?
I don't know. I don't know. I think, I think both of us. Like, you can see kind of like, this is what his writing looked like at the beginning of the year. Um, and this is what his writing looks like. This was today. Um, I went on my free fall. It's scary. You know, you've got all those vowel teams in there. Um, he's got sight words. He's got capitalization. Um, so it's just.
How about the periods?
Not yet. Um, but just, you know, truly a testament to, um, the power of something that's structured and systematic. Um, and kids really do get excited about it. So.
So we looked at the scope and sequence of UPI and no program we've discovered is a perfect program. So we have modified it a little bit to include some phonics features that are not included in the UPI. Um, blends, for example, were not part of the instruction. So we added in a unit on blends. Contractions were not in the manual, so we added a unit on contractions. Um, and then we're going to be doing this in third grade as well. Phonics instruction will be part of third grade and the UPI manual, it's per P to two. So we have extended our scope and sequence to include, um, boots and prefixes and suffixes that were also, um, not included in the program. So we are modifying the actual progression of phonics skills a little bit, but we're sticking with the, we're using the outline and we're using, um, the, the routine and the majority of their, their sequence, but we're adding in some things that we found were missing. And it resources. So one of the things that UPI does is includes, um, high-frequency words or irregularly spelled words into the sequence of instruction. So we looked at the high-frequency words in foundations. We looked at the high-frequency words in Teachers College. We looked at them, um, from just in the balance. We looked at the power words in this resource and we came up with, um, list one, two, and three, our A, B, and C. We haven't finalized how we're going to call it yet, but we have created a list for Brighton that includes their regularly spelled words that we want our kids in K through three to be learning. Um, and one of the shifts that we're making is we're going to be teaching them how to orthographically map the sounds and not just memorize them. Um, so foundations, the flash cards, you know, the trick word cards kind of look like this and teachers would just drill and make sure that the students could memorize them. And that did work for some students, but for many of the students in the classroom, that was just not something that was available for them. It didn't, it didn't take it in their memory.
Yeah.
So we're going to be teaching them a different way. We're shifting how we're doing it and we're hoping that they'll have a more solid understanding of the sounds in these words, which will hopefully translate into their spelling. Um, so that's one thing that we are doing and we created a list. And we're also going to be teaching them when we can teach them, when they match the phonics feature. So for example, um, in kindergarten, when we're introducing the, the P, we're going to teach them up. Or we're going to, when we're introducing the TH diagram, we're going to introduce the word that. I can't remember exactly, but more or less, more, more or less, no, da is right away. We want da to come up right away. So for some of them, there will be a heart before the phonics feature is introduced. And then once they've learned that, that rule, that spelling rule, it will no longer be a, something that they have to memorize by heart. It will be something that they've just internalized because they know the spelling rule. That's that part of it. So Hegarty is a phonological awareness curriculum that we introduced a couple of years ago, but this year we really implemented it, paid it to where we needed it. Not all two is doing it this year, but, um, paid it to receive, um, professional development this year and teachers have a manual and they are using it daily, either right before reading time, right before writing time, during their, um, morning meeting, they're doing the lessons throughout the day. Some teachers like to just do it in one shot, but then they kind of go back to it throughout the day as well. But we are definitely doing more phonological awareness instruction than ever before, um, as a result of the Hegarty curriculum.
And I'm very excited because our preschool teachers who have three and four-year-olds and our pre-grade teachers are also receiving training and they will start early. So a lot of this work can really start with our youngest learners out there. So that by the time they do enter our K and one and two, you know, we'll be a little step ahead with them.
So if you think back to the rope, you know, we've covered the phonological awareness, the decoding, and then that, the sight recognition. So those three strands and that word recognition part. So that's really where we've been focusing a lot of our work here. And the, the universal screener, we talked about a little bit. Um, DIBLs be found to be really quick and easy and it gives us a great snapshot of where students are. Um, this year we've highlighted going into rooms like a SWAT team where all the reading teachers go in and kind of assess the whole class and we're able to quickly see how the grade is doing, um, with their phonological awareness, their nonsense word reading, um, their rapid letter names. And we've done, some of the upper, upper grades, we've done the oral reading fluency as well. So we are really trying to get a full picture of every student at the beginning, middle, and end of the year. And then for the students in intervention, we're using the progress monitoring tools that are part of DIBLs as well to really make sure that they are building their skills in those areas.
And the whole team has used for phonics too, all along, especially in intervention and being able to find those assessments that really will give you more information to kind of get to, you have to identify the problem before you can solve it. So always looking to figure out what needs to happen.
And you've also probably heard us talk about AMIRA, um, in, in the last few meetings, I think. It's, it's another universal screener we were piloting this year, uh, to see it was very high-tech, AI, um, where the, the child, it was, it, one of the, one of the perks of it was to save teachers' time. So we wouldn't have to do this whole SWAT team thing or have a teacher sit down with every kid. But the, uh, student would sit in front of the computer and, and really, and the computer would listen and, and rate. And it was pretty, it was pretty amazing, uh, when it works. Um, we are getting feedback now. Um, I just sent out, um, a survey this morning for all teachers that they've been using it for a couple of months, uh, three, maybe. Okay. Um, just to try to get some feedback and see what's working, what's not working, to see if it was something we want to pursue. So we'll use that once we gather enough information. But that was part of the work we're doing. Uh, DIBLs does seem to be the way.
DIBLs is pretty darn reliable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then shifting the balances, you know, Susan purchased a book for K one and two teachers and teachers all have it in hand. And we're hoping to do some book clubs around the different chapters. And teachers are already learning that they're already doing a lot of the things that the book suggests. It's really great news. And if they have questions about anything, it's a great resource. Um, so hopefully we will all continue to grow our knowledge over the course of the summer and next year and beyond, um, with science of reading.
And there's some short little webinars. I added those links. Katie had sent them out. So I passed them along and those were very helpful, especially as I was reading the book, because that would really kind of entice me. And then I go back and recheck. So it's, it's really important for us to, to do this work with our teachers.
And that was a lot. You guys have a question for them.
You know, that Andrea has a question?
I really have two questions. And I think that we may have touched on some.
Okay.
Um, both of them. But thank you. Of children coming in from all over the country. How do you, how do you handle that in terms of, in terms of the things that you're talking about, which are the most successful? And the other question I have is, as children come in, are you seeing any trends where the, the, are stronger readers coming in from, from places that use either what you're using for other, other, um, sources of teaching?
I haven't personally noticed any trends. We have a big military population at fame, so it's a transient population. And, um, in terms of what programs that they are using, I haven't noticed any discrepancies in terms of like, wow, you have so many more skills than this other student who's using a different program. Um, in my experience, I don't know if you guys have a different experience, but, um, when we do have new students, we assess them right away and we give them a wordless assessment. We give them a running record. We give them a phonological awareness screener. We give a sight word assessment. So we really do try to find out exactly where they are and with their literacy, literacy needs. Um, we give them a spelling assessment. And then depending on whether or not they need intervention, we try to get them in right away. Um, and then we'll meet on them every six to eight weeks and we provide support in the classrooms as well. So we have interventionists and reading specialists go into our readers workshop and we're able to provide even more support in the classroom in small groups or one-on-one, um, in addition to the pull-out time.
And in addition to the military, we have the whole triangulation of Norwich, New London, Brighton, and even Ledgerd and other places. So we do have as many as 400 students moving out in any given year and 400 different students moving in. So out of a population of over 4,000, you have a net difference of almost 1,000. So I think when we got the first Blue Ribbon, when it was style school and cess school, um, one of the things the teachers all said is we get to know our kids really quickly and we know how to assess them. And I think that's the secret sauce is really the teachers and the interventionist really trying to figure out what's going on. And I think after this work, we're going to even get better at it. Dean, oh, sure. I want, Andrea then Dean.
Actually, this is for you, Susan. I only meet with the superintendent. We talk about maybe consolidating how, how the triangulation might work.
We talk about that a lot. We, we meet on a regular basis. As a matter of fact, Cynthia Ritchie, who's the superintendent in New London, was the first cohort in the masterclass. So we actually went out and had a real quick conversation. And so she was the one who got me excited about getting involved. So I tried to sign up as soon as possible, but we're finally getting in. So, and the same thing is true with, you know, well, all my partners. We slime all the way down to Old Saybrook, you know, and, you know, over in Stonington. So we do a lot of collaboration and discussion about what's working.
Ever considered using the same?
We actually are using very similar. They, I mean, I don't know that anybody has done this level of work. I was telling Fran Rabinoz about it, that we probably should share it with the State Department because that's their job is to write a model curriculum. And that's what they did with the Common Core, but they really did it more in the mathematics and not so much in the reading and writing. So that does need to happen. That's the State Department's job when they get people, experts from around the state to come for it. So, thank you.
You just reminded me that we did look at the Common Core standards for the grade level as well. And they're pretty vague. I don't know. I mean, it's like the child knows grade level phonics instruction. So we really educated ourselves and decided if we, we needed to really decide what that meant.
And I know that answer, that was a question. She asked, like, how did that change? How is it different? And I don't think that it is greatly different, other than we're emphasizing the phonics piece of it and we're making it more dynamic. Was it equitable across our district?
And ensuring the transfer. I think that's so important, that we don't let it go, that it's all. That we don't let it go, that it's always kind of with us. Like you said, Carrie, like it's so wonderful to see your children noticing it when they're reading and paying attention and saying, I know this now.
And we're really hopeful that if one student travels from FAME to Mystic, or you know, if they're transferring between the schools, then they'll be able to join a, a first grade class and be comfortable with the phonics routines and, and know, the teacher will know exactly where they've come from and what instructions.
Readers, you know, we've talked as far as like what, what will travel with them through school to school, you know, they'll, they'll come with a C and S. Speaking to students coming to us new, and we can have transfers and we've got such a transient population, getting them into a program that's consistent, with their routine every day, then they catch them up in speed so much quicker and make them feel more comfortable.
I think one of the differences, we always had word walls. And then it was brought to my attention, probably at Mystic River, I see a sound wall. And so now we're really developing those sound walls to go along with the work that we're doing. So I think that's the important shift. I'm good, Rebecca. Is Dean?
First one is, I mean, much like a river, that if they throw that out, I've got really in front of me something to ask them. Um, I mean, I think, beg forgiveness, it's in front of me. It's no secret that English is not written very well. Do you know whether that presents this, this is just for my curiosity. So the trust of the language is pretty much fanatic. They call it Spanish, for example, or even Italian. You imagine that reading teachers in those languages have a much easier time. Are you planning on spelling with the language? Or is that kind of a longer?
I mean, I do, uh, I, I, I have a high degree of RAC and I am a politician who are building in a clinic, especially Spanish. I need, need, especially my third grader, fifth graders. Um, and I'm teaching them, you know, a very similar program for curious teaching. And it's a rule and they, they love it because it's tangible and they get it. That could be put an exception out there, which have many of unfortunately, that's when they get discouraged. So yes, I do, I do see that. It is a conversation.
We've all figured it out, but.
And then we're wandering through the desert, like you said, like that's.
Yes, exactly. There are hundreds of words that break the rules. Yes.
Yeah.
So many, so.
At least it's not Chinese. My second question is, um, we're here basically on K through two, right?
Well, actually it's K through three.
Okay, I'm sorry, K through three, I should. So my question is, how do we make sure that any good work that's done at this level carries on at the other level? Because it's a, it's a relink.
Right.
And, uh, it's not a given that it happened, great, they grade to grade, that the skills picked up or translated and back and then added on to and then passed on to the following grade. So how are we integrating this or making sure that the time is passed before five, six?
So it wasn't just my elementary teachers that came to me. I had six grade teachers coming to me. And remember that they had missed like a major ingredient in their elementary. And fortunately, we have literacy specialists at that level too. And they're actually going into the classroom. They're really giving the teachers some new skills because when you're a sixth grade teacher or a high school teacher, you may not know how to teach phonics or you might not remember those rules. So a lot of that work has been done again with that team, but you ask a really good question. And that's how I started paying attention because my teachers are coming to me saying, we need to do something differently. This is not working. Our kids really need more than what we have right now.
So do you think that's working?
I don't know what your, I don't know what your question is.
No, I know, no, no. They have the awareness.
Know that we have to shift.
And we're hoping that we bolster our tier one now that hopefully the transfer will be.
But you're right, like it's, it's we need to expand eventually. It's not as comfortable for them, um, for sure. But it's, it's definitely in our radar radar. And it's something that we are planning to, and then like coaching and supporting the classroom teaching.
This work is applicable to the upper grades.
And the resources won't be available to them too. All of the, all of the lessons and all of the slideshows and every resource that we create for the K to three.
Go on our website.
Will be available. So if they're noticing large gaps in their classroom, they can go in and implement the lessons that they need to.
Even, even a relative trade. They're all, all the cards link together, but the engine's working, doesn't it?
Sorry, you, you were. Yeah, well, and just to think about it another way, um, like K to three, you're learning how to read. And then you start to switch to reading to learn. So the upper grades, it's, it's reading to learn. However, literacy specialists and teachers in those upper grades also have to be aware of all, like we lay the foundation and everything builds on that. But the work that we've done here, it's a spoken sequence, like developmentally, roughly developmentally, how kids should learn how to read words and decode words. So if a fourth grade teacher gets a student who is at the CDC level, like they can only read cat, dog, words like that, then they can go to our, this isn't just a, these are lessons for kindergarten, these are lessons for first. This is a spoken sequence. It's just like, uh, I went through OD training for teaching. We're working in this open sequence. So we place those kids, we figure out where they're at, and then we go from there. So for the fifth grade teacher, isn't going to spend twenty minutes a day on phonics instruction for the whole class. Unless the class really needs it, which right now COVID, we might have to for a couple of years. But hopefully in a couple of years, the big work will happen in the lower grades.
And they have done many lessons for the whole classroom. They've seen that happen. I know that to go through. One more question.
Yeah.
So kids come in all shapes and sizes. Um, and they require different approaches to instruct it depending on the kid I get it. And one, one of the natures of, of math education is this kind of approximation. You don't want to, but in an ideal world, you've got a teacher or student. That's, that's the way schools used to do it. The kid went to tutor. Do you detect behind differences? Do you detect the presence of dominant, if you will, something that's working with you or against you? That is, well, rental involvement or whatever. Is that, is that a large factor? I would think it would be. But I'm wondering what, what your experience, do you feel something when you're working with a kid that's, that's struggling? Like if only there was more engagement or that doesn't really matter. Like you can actually fill that gap with what you're doing.
We don't, we have control over what's happening here at school. We don't always have control over that. But when you can partner with parents and family support, those kids make phenomenal.
The parents have the first pick.
Well, and that's actually one of the agenda items, Dean, that's really important to us because that's the other thing. In the past three, four years, we used to have these literacy nights and we bring families in more often. Um, I mean, they did have a window of opportunity when they were on Zoom to kind of peek into the classroom. And I've heard some, you know, some interesting, um, you know, kind of feedback on that, positive and negative. So, um, but but I think that that's a key ingredient. And I know this board realizes that, that the family engagement is probably one of the most important things. And we really want to get back to that in a more serious way, especially with this, the rollout of this is going to be really important to communicate and to really give parents, um, the information and sending home the decodable text and even, I remember a little, um, you know, bookmarks that would tell the parent, you know, these are some things you can do when you're going, when the child is reading with you.
Great question. Rita? My question to follow up to Dean's, and I'm great in town. For our students that were schooled in Teachers College, and they missed out on the phonetics learning, they're in middle school, they're in high school now. You know, you can't expect a, um, a social studies teacher or a science teacher in high school to go back and look what's going on with phonetics. How, this is, Susan, how are we helping those which I would think would be tons of them in high school and middle school that, you know, didn't get the phonetics that they're getting now?
So I, I would say that we have the multi-tiered levels of support like we do SRBI. Um, in elementary, we have it in middle school, we have it in high school, we have literacy specialists in all those buildings. And we always had phonics with Teachers College. We actually, when we first adopted Teachers College Reading and Writing Project, um, the workshop model, we had the, um, Wilson, um, foundations. So it wasn't until kind of just right before COVID that we started using elements of the TC, but I think we always had foundations as well. So I, I don't think that was the missing ingredient. But I think the way they restructured this to make it so clear and so accessible and so um, relevant for the teacher and easy for the teacher to use and that they will be able to take these, because they plan on putting this all on that curriculum site that teachers can get to in a, in a heartbeat. And I love what you were saying about that could be used by, um, literacy specialists in the middle school and high school, and they can actually teach those kids probably pretty quickly. You know, um, but then there's, Denise is going to bring us to another where there could be a disability in reading and then you might need even more intervention and a different kind of in, intervention as well.
Any questions, um, from the board members who was on Zoom? I I also just would like, um, to take the opportunity to introduce you to Matthew Scholman. He is our, um, other board member. He said you were going to be here at seven and you got here like at seven, and I noticed.
I won't apologize because situations happen like.
We know.
I'm glad to be here. I may be plowing some ground, but I was not overwhelmed, but I came close to being overwhelmed with the quality and rigor with the materials that are prepared for us tonight. They reflect well on the staff and superintendent and on the faculty, our faculty that's working. I do have two questions. I spent much of the weekend on the internet, uh, my looking at whole language. Why Johnny can't read structural literacy? I mean, I spent hours and hours trying to fill up gaps. I don't think I did a lot, but I tried. And there were two elements that I think have something to do with literacy and reading that may be there, but I haven't seen. So I want to ask two questions and I'm not sure who I'm asking to, Susan, whether it's you or the faculty. What's the role? The first one is what's the role of grammar in teaching words? You may have discussed this. If so, I apologize. And the second, what's the role of cursive as a tactile learning strategy? I bring up grammar because as a substitute at a middle school level, um, there was a game I was told to play a game with the youngsters, Madelins. Do you remember Madelins? You're probably too young. So then what's adjective, Mr. Scholman? What's an adverb, Mr. Scholman? And I'm saying to myself inside, oh, holy potato pancake, seventh graders don't know it. But it's a serious question. To, to what extent does grammar play a role in literacy? And how are we dealing with that? And cursive? I know I'm a dinosaur. But I think practicing cursive and learning it, even if if I asked my wife, I'd never mastered it. But practicing cursive is a tactile way, it's visual, it's. So what are we doing with those two, if anything? And is that something we would want to get?
Well, the literacy specialists have been always involved in doing that work with our teachers and we have a spoken sequence to a pacing guide for grammar. Um, really K through twelve, probably. You know, we do have a pacing guide that we do use. Um, but I, I would say that because of the phonics and the way that we're able to decode words, we're also able to encode. So it's going to really help our kids. But there are conventions that kids need to know. And they learn it early on when they learn to write, but then we need to continue to teach it even into the middle grades and into the high school. Um, so I don't know, you might want to add on to that, but that's, and I know that we've we've actually piloted learning without tears and it's a handwriting program that we use, preschool, pre-K, um, all the way through. We had had a third grade pilot in cursive and many of our third grade teachers participated. The problem is that you kind of have to use it. You know, it's not one of those things you can learn and not use. And so the expectation would be that they use cursive, but I think because writers these days, especially in the middle school and high school, everything gets typed and edited that way. That's kind of the, the way that writing happens. Um, so it was hard to keep that engine going, but we did do a pretty good job. And what this team has done is they've taken that as well. Learning without tears and how the handwriting works to outline. So that piece correlates to the exact way that they're doing the, um, decoding, so that it all matches up. So the teacher's not doing one thing in the, in the, you know, the handwriting book that's not being done with the phonics. So we want it all to gel. So kids really get that practice.
And does the balance, does the balanced program have elements of grammar?
Oh, absolutely. It's a big piece of it in editing and revising. Absolutely. It's a huge piece. Yeah. Did you want to say something though?
I know it's definitely embedded into our reading instruction, separate from our phonics.
And writing instruction. I think it's explicitly taught in writing and practiced and recognized throughout the day. I mean, during morning meetings, teachers are talking about different elements of grammar. Um, definitely during phonics instruction, it happens embedded in guided reading or, um,
I just saw Jeopardy game, I think fifth grade, because they're getting ready for S back. And someone picked phonics level 500, you know, and it was a grammar question, you know, and they had to take a sentence. They had to rework it to make it grammatically correct and make sure that all the conventions were there. So some of that, I, that was pretty old school. That was how I learned, you know, so that they are teaching those elements. They have to because it's in our S back state test as well.
We're going to come back to it as well. We're going to be reviewing that curriculum. And, and continuing to work on.
Uh, cursive, I don't know. We'll, we'll have to talk about that. I don't know that it's been outlined to go beyond third grade, that they might have tried it out in third grade. Kids love to do it, actually.
The handwriting, though, has taken more of a focus than it had previously. So
I'm what?
Handwriting, even, even all the way from TK, starting with TK, handwriting now has more physical. Is now explicitly taught and really focused on in the past, when you're one of these students. Previously.
That was our OT screen to us, our OTs and PTs, you know, our occupational therapist came to us and they actually use that program. And so that's when the teachers really saw that and said, wow, this is really very helpful. And so again, came to us and said, this is something we really need.
Yeah, good. I have a question about, about grammar. When I was an eighth grade teacher, we would spend the first marking period on grammar. So my definition of grammar may be quite different from yours. And I, when you say that you embed it in, in the, the, in the lesson, what does that mean?
No, just for example, so if there's, you know, for example, like a writing unit where you're, you're focused on, um, like a certain genre, you know, so if you're doing like, uh, like a genre that, that embeds like adjectives, like if you're doing like a narrative, narrative piece and adjectives, it's really important to describe your characters. The teachers will bring in adjectives and talk about, you know, what makes a good adjective and they'll brainstorm different, different adjectives that will enhance and elaborate the student's writing. Yeah.
And the parts of speech are really taught throughout all the grades and as, as, like you said, as an enhancement, but to make a better piece.
Right.
Right? Whether it's fiction or nonfiction.
I really, Susan, I would really like to go with the, the middle level.
And then I know Cory had some, some interesting things he did with the new product that we are going to be implementing called Parent Square. It's a good communication tool. It will replace our school messenger. It's a little outdated and this will personalize it a little better. Teachers that have ever have begun it and they've really been able to, um, share information, everything from kind of snippets of what kids are doing during the day. But Cory was able to put together some pieces for his parents that I just was really so impressed with, that to really help them understand what the children were learning in phonics. And so and, you know, they would get this through this parent square. It would beep at them or do whatever it does and say, open me. Cory has something to say to you. Here, here's the latest tip for the day.
Okay, so, um, this isn't an overview of parenting right now. So, um, but back at, in the start of kindergarten, we do a lot, uh, obviously with letter ID, letter sounds. And so I did a little video for each letter. And I would do everything like explain to them how, how, how we're teaching your child how to write the letter, how to make the sound. how to make the sound, how do you make the sound with your mouth, little stories to help with that, that kinesthetic piece of it. So I'm just going to pull up one of the videos. I don't know how this will come out, but we will see.
S is another fun one. So we talk about how we make the sounds. It's a small amount of air and it's quiet. So this is the small air sound. And then the loud one is but it's a small air sound and we pretend like we're pulling a snake of air, a small bit of air out of our mouth. So we said, oh, smile like you're pulling a snake out of your mouth for tricks. And the kids loved that. So that's why when the picture, there's a snake. Okay. And then we talked about how snake also starts with s. So we do S, snake, s. Okay. Now, writing's a little trickier. So we can do little curve, turn, little curve for the uppercase S. And then for lowercase s, we do the same thing, but we're going to be in the middle, little curve, anchor back. Now, I also like to tell the kids this trick, which they like. So flying C, stop, drop and roll. Flying C, stop, drop and roll. The kids like that one too. Okay. And that's the letter S.
He will put, he'll put the video on chat so that you guys can see it. We do know that you guys cannot hear us online. In fact, it was actually from his computer speakers how we heard it.
And this was back from, this is before we did all this. Like this is stuff that I've been doing in my classroom from the training that I brought. So, I mean, again, this was on Parent Square that I posted it so that parents can go back anytime throughout the year. And a lot of my parents said this was great because they'd be like, what I've learned today? What'd you learn today? Like, I'm not sure. And then I they start telling me everything about. And then the little kids will come along and watch the video too, so.
So this is a way that you message your kids in your classroom.
So I did this as a post. In this case, this is the catch up. So I did a bunch of letters in one post. But usually I would do like a weekly update and I would attach a video of like, this is the letters we're learning this week. There's little videos.
So this is the old, so this parent square is only occurring in Cory Mott's classroom.
No, the parent square is being piloted at Thames River and by all teachers.
In the upper grades, I've been doing word survey and other spelling program and I post every week with the lesson star that I'm doing.
And it's going to be rolled out to the whole district next year.
And Cory showing you everybody just because
So like the handy in our kitchen said, ooh, lunch today, I changed the real tea.
So what I'm hearing is, is that the parent square is a form of communication. Is it kind of like the classroom dojo?
Yeah, it's going to replace the reminder.
It replaces everything. It replaces sign up seniors.
Because right now, if I had a child in middle school and in Thames River, but they also, I had one in a different magnet school. There's a possibility at the present moment, I would have three different ways of messaging. So next year.
You'll have your three children are on the left side that you can click on and it'll go directly to their needs, but important to them. And then you have the option to toggle between three buildings and also do the district level now.
And then there's Power School. So we still have Power School. Yeah, we will have to do that. You got a little snapshot of it. And then looking ahead, we have still more work to do. Not done.
A lot of work to do because I, I just want to compliment this team because the work that has we aren't done. So beginning of June, we all have a team meeting. The grade levels of A one to across each of our schools. And we're gonna be needing to roll this curriculum out with grade level features. That's going to get to building level and we're really excited about sharing with the teachers. We had grade level representation throughout this process at each, from each of our schools. So teachers have had eyes on this curriculum or the spoken sequence and I think generally the feedback, feedback is generally possible. So we're really excited about sharing. We've had summer curriculum every, every summer. Thank you, Susan. It's been wonderful. We're we're really purposeful about that work with what it's going to look like this summer. And that is going, as you've seen today, there's a lot of things that need to be created. A lot of materials, a lot of things that are possibly gatekeepers for making sure that this, this rollout goes. So we want to alleviate a lot of that stress for teaching a really because we want to make sure that phonics is taught and teachers are able to defend the plan. So we're going to be sharing a lot of things. And over the summer and over the next coming months, I guess you could say. And then, and then over the, throughout this whole process, we wanted to make sure that we are continuing to listen to the teachers and listen to feedback about how things are going within contracts. Listening to people without order, listening to people that work well and people that stand. And we, we need to have that process to the future.
We'll continue to implement professional development so that it can train our continually understanding the resources that are around today and able to implement the curriculum in the best way possible. And so we're going to give them this permission prior to the middle school year and then continuing throughout this year as well, that teachers feel supported. We're going to be digging into this shifting balance. Really explain the sciences of reading and the research that has gone behind all these shifts. And I think a lot of it, teachers are really open and excited to learn about and we're going to have a book chat and really digging into that and understanding how we can tweak our instruction just a little bit. Really emphasize the phonetics of that so we can support our students. We will be digging into grade three, probably beyond that, you know, at some point. We continue to support our teachers through these kind of book chats and ongoing things, but also through our role as literacy specialists in the classroom. And it might look like modeling lessons. It might look like working side by side with teachers in the coaching way. Who might be that work providing resources or giving them some research or just some positive feedback or pep talk if they need it as they move forward through them. And we're really looking forward to getting this, this curriculum out there. If we think it's really going to be effective for our students, I mean, I think for me, that's where this comes from. And we want our students to get what they all deserve and equitably across our district, that they're all hearing instruction at child again. Like we know instruction matters and we want to make sure that all of our students are receiving what they deserve so they can be successful.
This summer, the main study summer, first of the year, we will also be meeting with students. There are times when students, though, in conjunction with summer, we'll also have here one.
We're going to be offering summer tutoring for those who need students. And we have been doing that since pandemic and it has made a phenomenal difference. For those students whose parents are willing to bring them, we're offering free tutoring and special.
At their own schools or where they are, like if they're at a camp at C K. We, our specialists have gone over, our tutors have gone over to meet the children where they are.
Especially about forty minutes because the teacher and two students like they're in terms of fan. But I do know that the data that we've collected, a lot of times we see kids like that summer time. But when they are coming for that tutoring, and they're able to kind of, that momentum going, which is super exciting for classroom teachers.
And we really give it to the school, the, the principal and the literacy coaches work together. They know who their intervention children are. They know their families. Sometimes a family might prefer Zoom and there might be a tutor who prefers Zoom and you can kind of connect them, but we do try to get them in face to face now. We think it's really important. But by them having the autonomy, not me trying to like figure that all out up here, because I wouldn't do half the script job as they do. They know their kids. They, they're able to engage their families and it really has made a difference, I think. And we do it in math too.
Any other questions on this portion of the presentation?
This, this was great because I read and I am not a literacy specialist. If you could only see my grammar. And actually I'm laughing because Andrea does see my grammar. There's oftentimes I'm like, can you please edit this? And she's learned a lot about my life. But just to kind of read this, but then to also to have you, I'm a visual learner and an auditory learner. So to have you guys present was so very helpful. And I know that we are probably, are we going into now hearing from Denise? I don't know if your friends need to be here because I know that you guys are working really like you've started work at a very early hour. But just in case this gets lost, thank you for continuously showing me why I'm gotten proud. The work that you guys do for the kids in the district are, is really amazing. Thank you. I, I, I have been honored to be here for 12 years. My three children have gone through the district. Just really gotten past, thank you. I think I'd like to wrap up their piece with the principals, just talking about that family group, you know, anything else that we might have missed. So that, you know, if they all have to school, they could. But, you know, just listening to the principals about this should work because they've really been involved too. You know, we've been trying to make sure that they're involved every step of the way at some of the changes and shifts that we're making. But also with families and, and you know, how do we get the information to our families? Maybe some of the things you used to do and you're going back to. So we'll start with Ryan and we'll just march ourselves around the room. Any, any other thoughts about initializing this and getting information to families and things that might work?
Someone in the room, perhaps it was on Zoom, asked a question. So what's different? From my perspective, one of the, one of the nicest parts of this work has been the head of the P A work. As in in our kindergarten, first grade and second grade classrooms and listening to kids talk about watching teachers present words and having kids identify beginning sounds, middle sounds, ending sounds. Just the discourse that happens in those lessons is powerful. Pre pandemic is not something I heard and saw a lot in the building and I think we might have identified that. We've really been able to get our, our primary teachers to find that word. And if it's a ten, maybe fifteen minute lesson at the most, you probably are five, six year olds. It's just that your kids talk about words, it's strictly a program. I think there's a lot of power in things that I look forward to.
Yeah, you're going, we're going around the room.
You'd ask about family engagement. I think someone said it earlier, when we partner with the family, that's where we do the biggest thing. That constant communication going back and forth. You know, something like this lesson about, you know, the mothers and things like, all of the little things that we do that give them tools to use at home. I think it's a big piece of that that we need to partner with that. And then I think we need to keep in mind that this is constantly changing. And I know that was brought up earlier, but we're always looking for something better. One of the things just last week night, I think go back to what Sarah was talking about, which was coaching. Literacy specialists have done probably a lot of work in the attention, like people back set. I can always say for my school, it's difficult to do that, but you know, just listening to Mike and we've got some people here that have done this work too, that, that can be very important. So I think going back to that. Engagement of families, I feel like sometimes that was like things, you know, when you got COVID, but I want to get back, you know, coming back around some of those opportunities, going to get close in and, you know, school parents would feel about how can I best help on speaking. It's just a really good shot of that. You know, it's so difficult because you've got a dependent level, you've got the family in this, it's a bunch of jobs. I feel like that's another, that's another reason. Super excited about literating itself. We put it out there and we've got a lot of folks in school that are very interested. So that is an opportunity. I feel like that's the big word. When you have those small events and there's an opportunity to engage and network, you need to build yourself and we need to young one.
So they want to help. I know they're going to crush the next people that are here to say, you know, the whole piece of it. And they do, sometimes they don't know how. So not only for your Thursday, you can pick up the phone, call them, tell them what we're doing in prevention. They also need small talk, right? Like work on this. Really? Or work on this for this week because this is where they're in the venture and then they feel empowered. So to give them those small talks. And we just, I thought I was probably like hour and a half or something to try and make sure we are getting, if it was, we get some people too. We're trying to like be creative with it and do like half hour reading and then stay with half hour math and so they keep on doing it already.
But I, this year we were really excited to start getting back to having our families in the building for some of our events. Literacy events and STEAM events, science events, and our parents are so excited to come back. And we've probably had the best engagement, the best attendance that we've ever had since I've been at this school because people are just, they miss us as much as we miss them. And so I'm really looking forward to getting back to all of our events. So that we can, we share what we do and we help parents understand a little bit more of what we do because what we do is so different than what happened when they were in school. Definitely when I was in school. And that's, they want to work with their children at home and we want to help them and support them in doing. So that's what that's the exciting piece. And all of this, the consistency and across all of the building and, you know, knowing that everyone's going to have what they need in their classroom. And what's happening here is happening over there and happening over there and that's great. I really want to focus on this. This is, will be our focus, K through three, you know? Because there's a lot of other things too that are out there, but we really want to be able to look at our calendar ahead of time and and make sure that we can incorporate this in, in our professional development and then in our day. I'm going to recognize Rita.
I, I was just going to compliment everyone because when I first joined the board and everyone had a different had different books that they use. So this is wonderful. Chris, you must remember all that.
I think dedication to the staff, teaching reading, teaching reading, I know, they've been tough. But what I have noticed, one of what is, is the joy of reading, the joy of writing. And I think it's more having, I mean, I've been drinking that wine. I don't know, it's like, what's writing? But now the children are excited to do it. They want to be safe. They want to get involved in it. I, I've read
My, my best piece of data is seventeen thousand books were checked out at Brown Middle School Library last year. Lizanne Johnson, you know, and she counts how many books are checked out and they're really reading in no school and you know. And they're really reading in middle school and you know, middle school and high school kids, unless they had to read the book, Macbeth. You know, sometimes they're not reading. So I think that's, that's a good piece of data. I want to keep seeing that grow.
It was just nice to know that the Bow of Mystic River could go to Baines River, I think, school and be on the same page.
Yeah, that's great.
Rita, that's a really, thank you for bringing that up. That's a good point, thank you. Matthew?
I'm curious, the parent and family partnering. I'm wondering how that interfaces with our equity piece, whether there is differentiation of parental partnering across different cohorts of the socioeconomic spectrum? Or is it pretty stable across all of them? And if there is differentiation, would you all reflect on ideas that you can share with us so we can get more participation?
I think one of the things that we know to be true is that sometimes we have to meet the parents where they are and not always expect them to meet us where we are.
Probably find that out, right? So like, like you were saying, like maybe perhaps like everyone gets the things better. And then you get it back from the usual suspects, right? You get it back from the usual kids and then there's this little pocket of kids and then you start going, okay, well, maybe I'll talk to their teacher, maybe I'll talk to social worker, maybe I'll talk to the person. Like into, let's do family home, like language. Um, can I call them instead? Um, can I talk to the student? So I think all of us would agree that we start at like one level and then we kind of like break it down in different sheets. And how we reach that, you know, and and communicate at that family and meet them as they need. Yeah.
Encourage your friends to watch the broadcast so they can hear the good news.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You know how much I appreciate you.
All of you.
Denise, can you start off with the distraction of people leaving?
Oh, absolutely.
You're going to do that?
Okay, well, thank you.
And this has been a topic from our State Department as well, is to really understanding how to best identify for dyslexia and the sooner the better. So so this is um, I'm just going to let people go. I had a thought, here's a thought.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much.
Take care, thank you guys.
Oh, gosh, thank you.
There you go. Wow. All right, so um, the second field that I wanted us to be in um, is that we, along with a lot of the discussion um, was around understanding when we did have a child that's identified. Um, I'm only vaguely familiar with this because I'm not a teacher. Um, but I am vaguely familiar with some of that stuff. Um, as a therapist and working with kids who have learning disabilities and how it impacts social emotional growth. Um, and so we thought it was a nice blend if if we were going to have lots of people talk to us about what um, what what learning, um, how do we, how do we teach reading in the K through three? But what does it mean when it's not working for some kids and what what are all those things? And what do we as a school department um, do to identify? And so um, Denise, it's good to see you, thank you for coming.
Thank you for that nice opener. Um, so the State Department of Education has added dyslexia as a primary disability on the I E P form in Connecticut as of about five or six years ago. So the information I'm going to share tonight is from um, our protocol and our training manuals from the State Department of Education. I'm sorry, I'm back, I'm back. Okay. Um, so we start with Scarborough's reading rope because as was stated earlier in the presentation, um, the two different components of reading need to be solidly developed at an early age, hopefully before age three. Um, and that being language comprehension and word recognition. And you'll see Scarborough's rope shows how when they're adequately developed, they are woven together to help a child become a skilled reader, what we call a fluent reader. And one of the reasons why I put this in the presentation is because when we look at students who are not fluent readers, we want to go back and try to identify where in that reading process they're breaking down or they're having difficulty. So that we can number one, assess it. And then number two, um, target that weakness with um, explicit instruction. So the working definition of dyslexia in terms of um, the State Department of Education was just revised in 2022. Um, this really came about with our new program of C T says. We have uh, new um, eligibility forms, we have new S R B I forms um, that really gather more data than ever before. That um, from tier one, as you've heard from the literacy interventionists, um, from tier two, students who are getting literacy intervention support. Um, tier one is the general classroom, tier two would be an interventionist support. And then from tier three, which could possibly be special education support. And we look at all of that data um, to determine if a student is or is not responding to instruction. Because more than likely that a student has received a really solid tier one reading program and intervention from a skilled reading specialist. If they're still not making progress in those different components of reading, it's a pretty good assumption that there's something that could be a disability that's preventing them from learning to read. Um, so our definition really focuses on the fact that dyslexia impacts a student's ability to read, specifically decoding and accurate and or fluent word recognition and spelling. So a student who has dyslexia is really a student that is having difficulty unlocking that reading code. Um, the phoneme awareness, the blending, the segmenting, the rhyming. Um, and then remembering those skills to apply to read fluently in decodable text. Um, just a few more notes, dyslexia is neurobiological in origin. It's often inconsistent or unexpected with a student's performance in other areas. So often students with dyslexia have average to above average cognitive skills and sometimes they have strengths in now. So this weakness in reading um, is is very unexpected and sometimes it's hard to um, to identify because you have students who are working many times at high levels. Um, and if they can gather meaning from the text, sometimes it's not always obvious that they're struggling with those specific word tact decoding skills. Um, but again, dyslexia usually results from a significant deficit in phonological processing. So the difficulty in um, identifying sounds and manipulating sounds, we call that um, segmenting words, uh, rhyming, um, all of those different tasks that we do with the young age with letters and words that we've heard about this. It was not very good. Um, so just a few clarifications, dyslexia is not primarily a visual and hearing or motor disability. It's not an intellectual disability or an emotional disability. Um, it's not usually a result of lack of appropriate instruction because we have in Connecticut, um, an S R B I or response to intervention process that provides students with intervention early on. Um, so Connecticut, we've learned through S R B I, students don't need to fail at reading before they receive intervention. The goal of our intervention program is to provide them that intervention early on when they're struggling. Um, typically students with dyslexia again have strengths in their reasoning, critical thinking, concept formation, problem solving, vocabulary, listening comprehension and social communication. Again, early identification is key and as are the use of those effective research-based interventions. So we want to be using uh, programs that provide students with strategies that we know work.
So for instance, Denise and I have partnered since I've been here with getting teachers Wilson trained. We had one teacher who got Wilson two trained and that was like a dissertation. I mean, we really, we afforded for her over time to work through that. And um, and even after she retired, she still does contract with us. So um, I think you have three or four teachers going out this spring.
Corey, yeah, Corey is, I'm, Gillingham trained.
I'm in the process, I've done all the work for her, I think.
For your fellow, to be a fellow?
To uh, for the associate level.
So there's so many levels and um, you know, they can even get a level that is like one of the highest levels where then they can train others. So we really are trying to make sure that we we pass that net wide for teachers who want to have that kind of training. Um, it starts with the level one, so really as many as we can, whether they're um, special educators or reading teachers and even classroom teachers. And you found a program called Spire that the teachers really like, which is based on, based on Horton Gillingham. So really trying to find those resources that will work best for our kids and the teachers. I think you've heard that message loud and clear. Clear, the most important thing is the skills that our teachers get through the process to they uh, teach them reading, right?
So just touching a little bit on the criteria for eligibility as a student with dyslexia in Connecticut. Typically, this is a student who does not achieve adequately for their age or meet their grade level standards in one or more of the following areas, oral expression, listening comprehension, written expression, basic reading skills, reading fluency skills, reading comprehension, mathematical calculation, mathematics, problem solving. Um, these are criteria to be identified, I'm sorry, as learning disabled. I mean, then we're going to break off into just specific dyslexia. Um, also, the student does not make sufficient progress. Um, so when when presented or when provided with scientific research-based interventions, um, these students also exhibit a pattern of strengths and weaknesses, which we talked about a little bit before. Um, often um, they have been provided appropriate instruction. Um, we call that explicit and systematic instruction based on those essential components of reading, math or writing delivered by qualified personnel. So if a student has come to the district and they've been homeschooled, for example, and they're struggling to read, um, we would not rush to identify them as having a learning disability because they haven't had adequate instruction. At least, you know, if the parent hasn't been able to provide to us what's been taught at home. We would want to provide them with instruction in the school setting before we move to identify them as a dis- as having a disability. Because again, we don't want to identify students as having a disability if they haven't received the appropriate instruction. And we want to give them an opportunity to receive that instruction and to demonstrate progress before we determine that they have a disability. Um, the student also um, has to need certain exclusionary factors. So if the student um, has a visual or hearing impairment or an intellectual or emotional disability, we might look at other disabilities other than learning disabled. And then lastly, we want to be sure that if we do evaluate a student for a learning disability, that that evaluation is comprehensive. That means that we're evaluating all areas of suspected disability. Um, so here's where if we're looking specifically, which we are tonight, at the area of dyslexia. We now, this is new as of 2022. Um, we just introduced this to all of our teachers in the fall. Um, we have, we now know in Connecticut that there are three types of reading disabilities that students can be identified with. And um, the benefit of this is that this helps us target our instruction to the area where the student is struggling. So the first type of reading disability is a specific word recognition difficulty. This is a student who has difficulty with reading real words, reading nonsense words and that automaticity or that fluency of reading, right? So they're not able to identify the letters, the sounds, those sight words, those um, C D C words with fluency. Um, they have a broad oral comprehension uh, that is good and they have vocabulary knowledge that is average or higher. So you'll see the asterisk after this type of disability. Often, students with a word recognition difficulty are identified as dyslexic.
We're hoping that these universal screeners will also shed a light that will be finding kids with this disability earlier on. Um, and you know, and also the training that we're providing for the teachers as well.
Um, the next type of reading disability focuses on comprehension. So these are students that probably, you know, would test very low in their knowledge of vocabulary, their oral language. Um, they have difficulty um, you know, with words and language in general. So their area of difficulty, if they have this type of a profile, would be a specific reading comprehension difficulty. They would be identified as learning disabled. Um, and then we have lastly, a mixed reading difficulty. These are students that have difficulties in full word recognition and comprehension. Um, but um, their reading comprehension difficulties exceed what can be explained by poor decoding. So again, these students would not qualify as students who are dyslexic.
But they would qualify having a reading disability.
They would qualify as having a learning disability in reading. So we've really um, in our state, I think, come a long way in terms of better understanding of students with dyslexia, what does their profile look like? What should we be looking for in our testing? And how should we be, well, we'll talk about that next, how should we should be addressing our instruction? That's it. Um, so one of the things I wanted to share with you.
Denise, well, before you go on.
Oh, sure. Denise.
Not that I want to sound like a dinosaur, however, since I am. I I don't remember, recall this kind of thing happening when I was in school. And I know that's many, many, many years ago. However, was that because those kids were just ignored or they just disappeared? Or has something happened in the way people were receiving and processing information that was a change?
Well, I think that the students still had similar types of reading profiles, but we hadn't necessarily drilled down and identified them as explicitly and then targeted the instruction to match their area of weakness. From my perspective, a lot of this became more uh, became clearer when we started to learn more about scientific research-based intervention. Um, it's called, it was called Response to Intervention nationally. Connecticut adopted S R B I and now we're moving to a multi-tiered system of support.
I I I understand that. Too much my question is, has something changed? Because I don't remember any of this, you know, I I've certainly never kids who didn't get it and and knew who they were. And I don't remember this widespread thing. And I'm, my question really is, I know what we're doing about it, but when did it really begin? When we do, because this seems to be, to be multiple. So that was my question.
Well, I think Horton Gillingham has been around for a while, right, Corey?
Well, yes.
You don't know what a while is.
Well. I mean, part of it is that the kids have always been there, but these kids are typically, they're very, they're very smart. They make up for it. So when you're talking with them, there is no indication that something's going on because the challenge for them is getting the words off the page. That's it. So they make up for it.
You're not seeing and you're you're seeing a stroke that has always been there, it hasn't been.
It's always been there, but the thing is now we have more sophisticated assessments, more teachers are aware of it. A lot of the kids in here and stuff included didn't leave uh, school, college with a master's reading specialist, doing that school and that's, we learn more about it. And so now we can, we'll, we know what to work on now, but the teachers have done this type of work. And now the goal is to get everybody on board.
I'm going to recognize William, Dean and then Rita.
Yeah, so I I just want to comment on the Orton Gillingham. Um, it it, that type of uh, training um, to help with dyslexia uh, is just phenomenal. Um, my son who's a senior um, is dyslexic and if you ask his uh, A P uh, English teacher from 11th grade and his A P English teacher from 12th grade and told them that Joe was dyslexic, they would be like, what do you mean? You know, um, his uh, the Orton Gillingham gave him the ability to uh, you know, catch up and excel. And uh, it's just amazing that that type of education and I'm so happy um, having gone through. And I'm so happy um having gone through all of this with uh with Joseph. You know, years and years and years and years ago, but taking years of 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 therapy to work through it and 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 the training and everything with the Orton Gillingham. I I'm just so happy that we're discussing this uh today. Um and I want to recognize how the school has um done such a phenomenal job um uh with students uh um that have been able to get the Orton Gillingham training.
Thank you, William. Dean.
It's one of these things, talk about dyslexia, for those who are not dyslexic. I sometimes call myself dyslexic, but I screw up when I write stuff. That doesn't mean I'm dyslexic. You know, your brain's not kicked in in the morning. Uh it was put to me quite a while ago. This is a very great overs- gross oversimplification of the problem. If I show you an object, any object, card, tree, pen, whatever, no matter how I orient it, you know it's a pen object. Right? You know, I keep on it. It's a pen, no matter how I show it to you. We all know this. Think anything of that. I take the lowercase letter D, B, P, and Q. Their basic circle with a line. What I was told was, if you're dyslexic, not all of it, not all dyslexic. But imagine what we know of its four different letters would appear to somebody dyslexic as the same letter. It's the same shape, isn't it? It's just oriented in different ways, but like the pen, no matter how you s- how you orient it, it's a pen. And they have to learn, you know, that is maybe thinking of one shape oriented a different way. If it's four different letters. And that's how I was told to understand something that I really had no experience with. How is it that somebody cannot make out four different letters, for example, if that's one form of the ability? So so I think a lot of this too has to do with for the most of us who are not dyslexic, understanding just what they're, not just labeling it, describing it. But how do you experience this? How do you get this? Probably why it's taking so long to get.
So I'll comment, and then I know Corey wants to comment too. Um it it is in many ways a common misnomer that students who reverse letters are dyslexic. So we just want to put that out there. There are some students who do reverse their letters and they are dyslexic, but not all students who reverse their letters are dyslexic.
Gross overs.
Yeah, there is a developmental um stage, but when children learn how to form their letters, and sometimes we just have to remind parents of that and give them some extra practice and some visual synths.
Man, another really good example, this is, you are, a good example would be thinking about your brain as a highway. And for the typical person, drive down a highway, it's nice and smooth. So when that letter comes in through your visual information, goes into your brain, gets processed, oh, that makes a book sound. You spit it back out, book. But for students dyslexic, their highways are all messed up. They have so many detours, they have so many potholes in in there. That the wiring, when they they come in as a, oh, that's a B, you see it as a B. But by the time it gets back here to tell you that's the letter B and then gets over here to tell you the sound, or mixes it up with something else. Do all this feedback before you spit it out and now it's a E. Um and a lot of what we're doing with the U fly, all that kinesthetic learning that we're going to be doing more of is to help straighten out those highways, make those connections and fill in those potholes. As I think we said, you know, um dyslexia with through proper instruction. A a kid can, it's because he's dyslexic, it doesn't mean that's, oh, oh. Uh you can be quite successful if you're given the right instruction and you help smooth out that highway. That's an oversimplification.
Right.
What Corey was referencing as the multi-sensory instruction means that children need to learn those letters and those sounds through multiple modalities, so through the visual, the auditory, and the kinesthetic motor. And that's what a lot of our programs like Wilson, Orton Gillingham, Spire, Lynda Moot Vell. Those are the main um structured literacy programs that are um that are approved by the International Dyslexia Association and most widely used. Um Spire is a newer program, it's modeled on the Orton Gillingham um philosophy. Uh but they're all what's called structured literacy programs and they provide students with a ten-step or systematic lesson plan. And that lesson plan addresses many of those components of reading. So they start working on phonograms with cards, then they might do some uh some blending of some words or some syllables. Um then they progress to building uh words. Um then they would progress to decoding and sentence reading. Um then they would progress to some pre-reading, um looking at the phonemes and the grapheme analysis. Then they would progress to reading, sound dictation, pre-spelling, spelling, sentence dictation, and then some independent practice. So it's a very structured lesson plan that in that forty-five minutes to an hour, you're touching with maybe one vowel combination, maybe you're working on O A that day. You know, O A, oh, you're going through all of those steps of that lesson plan with that one vowel combination. And you're working on words with that vowel combination in reading. You're taking off, you know, you're showing the ch- the child the word boat and then you're taking the book off. So you're 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 manipulating those sounds and they're practicing those sounds both visually, auditorily, and then they're spelling them either in the air or they're spelled, they're tracing them on the paper. So it's a very involved lesson. Um but as Corey said, um with that kind of um explicit teaching, um students do make pretty phenomenal progress. And they're excited to move through the steps of the program and and graduate and become more confident and fluent readers and writers.
And we hear that all the time with Wilson too. That they, you know, and it sometimes takes the, takes some time, like they could be in middle school.
I promise I'll be similar. The March meeting, we had parents come to the mic and all or most of them had something to say about the reading program that we have and whether it serves or doesn't serve dyslexic kids. So how do we, how do we square what sounds like a complaint of observation? I'll call it complaint and what's being presented here today. Are we, are we overhauling? Are you explaining what we already have? What's the degree of success? We did it well. We expect that to happen most often or or what?
So we're strengthening the core and we're adding components and really focusing on components that that young children need to read. And everything we're doing is going to strengthen the reading of students who who may struggle to learn to read. Um so everything we're doing, including using the DIBELS, the DIBELS has a dyslexia component. So there are several subtests in the DIBELS that have to do with rapid automatic naming, letter fluency, sound fluency, word attack that are specific, um you know, indicators of a child who may have dyslexia if they're struggling with those uh subtests. And DIBELS goes K to eight, so we can continue to use it beyond third grade. Um and we can use it three times a year and we can use it to identify students who are struggling to target instruction and then to monitor their progress. So everything we're doing from the DIBELS to the U fly to the Haggerty is strengthening the core.
And we're strengthening it within the workshop because we we're transferring what they've learned in the phonics, separate phonics instruction. So that it's actually applied and we're watching and monitoring that. So it's applied in either reading or writing. So. I'm going to recognize Rita and then, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the new, the study for readings, I didn't, we just got them. I didn't try them out and the new units of reading and teacher college does a much better job aligning with the phonics instruction that should be happening. That's nearly right now, the leaders in the county, you know, proceeding C word, which is what we're, the kids are.
And I have to say, the new decodable texts are like light years ahead of what kids used to read for decodable texts. They used to be very dry, very um, you know, uninteresting, really kind of monotonous readers. The new decodable texts are like light years improved in terms of um engagement, relevance. They're culturally sensitive, racially diverse, um they're just, they're phenomenal.
And we're getting those resources from a lot of different places. We really purchase them from multiple places.
I I was just gonna say, Andrea, sort of goes back to what you said when our older son, it was mid-eighties and he was dyslexic and I knew he was dyslexic. But the Groton school system would not recognize him, so we took him to Easter sale and had him tested and so was because he couldn't compensate. I mean, it wasn't until third or fourth grade that, you know, they said, oh, yeah, there there really isn't a problem. Um so unfortunately, they they didn't, he didn't get the help, like he has a PhD in psychology and apple. We were able to help him a lot. But now our granddaughter in DC who's nine, she's dyslexic and it's amazing progress she made. Having that intervention this year, i- it's just remarkable. So.
And we're hopeful that we'll.
I don't think in the eighties they recognized it in uh in as much, you know.
If you're right, you was when I was teaching at that time.
Yeah. No, it wasn't, and it was really, really a struggle.
And I'm hopeful that we won't have to wait till a child is upper elementary or middle school to detect it. That we'll get so much better at it, that we'll be able to use these indicators, these resources, these universal screeners when they're pre-K, K one, I mean, Corey's done a phenomenal job working with the screener process for kindergarten, for instance, and the TK process. So just knowing more about our children coming into us and if we can get this kind of instruction to them, once they're identified sooner than later, that's going to make a difference.
Well, and Carrie's last story is so, I mean, profound. So she has a student who's made significant progress, he's up to grade level now at the end of the year. So without her intervention, he could, that student could have been a student who next year was referred for intervention. So strengthening the core is where we want to start.
We have to focus.
Because that's the curriculum that everyone receives. And if that's a strong foundation, then it's going to decrease the referrals to intervention and the referrals to special education.
So even though they'll always be there, there will be some, I'm hoping, right? There'll be fewer and we'll be needing many ways better.
There'll be freedom.
Yeah.
To work with those kids.
That's right, yeah, that's right. Becky.
Part of what I read over the weekend was about the politicization of the reading wars, to quote what they were saying. And my impression of the parents who came and expressed concerns were that they were not being politically correct from any given point of view, that those were genuine concerns.
Absolutely.
And so the the question I have is, there seems to need to be a goal. I don't know how big, it could be a very small goal, I'm not trying to exaggerate, but there is some kind of goal between what we're actually doing and public perception of what we're actually doing. And I'm not quite sure what, how how we go about engaging the public to have a greater understanding of what we're doing. But I think doing right as we're doing is necessary but not sufficient. We also need to engage, so bring along, educate, engage uh the public that is legitimately concerned, even if their concerns might not be legitimate.
Well, and you've heard the parents talking about getting back to community and having more of these events and but sometimes it's just really knowing your your classroom teacher and the and the children sitting in front of you and those parents. Sometimes the closest, closer you're communicating to the families that are the, that have the children in your classroom. That's almost a better way to meet those needs, I think.
And I think that article that Susan was referencing at the beginning of the meeting um about phonics. What was it, why phonics?
No, phonics first.
Phonics first. Um to me, that was a very important article because it it opened my eyes in terms of the legislation really wanting to ensure that across the board in every elementary school in Connecticut, that all children are receiving a solid tier one reading program. Because we know there are those children who go home at night and maybe don't have books in their house. You know, and aren't read to. Um so the article really spoke to that, that, you know, similar to what we're trying to do in Groton, having a similar curriculum in all five of our elementary schools. The state of Connecticut wants to have a similar curriculum in every elementary school. So every child is receiving a a curriculum that's a a strong tier one reading curriculum. Whether they're being read to at home at night and there's books in that home or not. So to me, it spoke about equity.
Um I've got William and then Dee.
So just to build on what Matthew was saying, um uh with parental concern, there was, you know, reference to other districts and how much uh, you know, higher their percentile of of reading skill uh at specific grade levels was compared to Groton. And I think that's one thing that the public might be missing is how unique our school district is and the town of Groton is. I mean, it's one of the most unique, if not the most unique, school districts in the entire state. So to compare our our data and stats to Darien and Simsbury um is not really the best way to do it. Um is to really look at how well we're doing with, you know, how many challenging um unique individuals that we're caring for uh in the schools and doing great things to try and and assist them and help them grow and uh and learn to read and and everything, you know, the math and the science. We have such a um, an incredible um, unique, diverse community. And I think I'd like to recognize how how great the the district is doing in regards to that and uh understanding the challenges that we continue to have and and work on.
Thank you, William. Dean.
So I recognize too that the district is different. Unique is a word that's used all the time. Well, we'll just leave it as, we'll just leave it there. It's a very special district in a lot of ways, it's true. Um I don't recall anybody comparing Groton to Darien or Simsbury. They might have, and I might have overlooked them. I can't remember. I do remember comparisons to Stonyville, which again, is not necessarily the same kind of apple, same kind of apple. But what else are people supposed to do if you have no peers? Apparently, from what I hear, you're peerless. Well, then all those comparisons are useless. Well, some comparisons are valid. I wouldn't go so far as to say the parents are just imagining that they're a problem. They do actually, if they are the parents, they have kids, they're noticing things. Uh I'm gonna have to give some weight to some of their observations. I don't think it's all their head.
I don't, just you know, you're right.
And I think that that's, I think, the children that are in middle school and high school that have missed out on what is going on now in our elementary classroom, they didn't get it. So yes, there are problems and I think those test scores, you know, are gonna reflect very well.
Let's see.
Okay, so I'm gonna recognize Jay and then William again.
Yes, thank you. Um so Denise, I I just want to clarify the screening procedure uh for dyslexia. Because there seems to be a perception that there are a number of still undiagnosed um cases of of dyslexia among students. So when you say universal screener, are we saying that every pre-K and K student is being screened with this DIBELS? Um or is it just students who exhibit some other uh symptom before they're screened?
So we're using a Haggerty screening for community awareness, preschool, pre-K, K one, two, or we will absolutely be doing it for everybody next year. Um but we also use the DIBELS eight universally. So I showcased the data from the beginning of the year. I'm going to be showcasing at the end of the year, so you'll see, but that's all of our children and hence going forward. We did use two J, um use it for intervention when kids started to struggle, we would use that DIBELS eight um assessment, but now we're doing it. Um and then we've used the Brigance for concepts about print. So we've used a lot of nationally normed assessments and resources to help us understand children when they ear- early on in education, when they first come to us. Would you want to say anything about that?
Well, yeah, like the you, universal screeners, like dyslexia isn't, there isn't one test that just says, yep, you're dyslexic. Honestly, um there's several indicators. And so a universal screener like the DIBELS, everyone in kindergarten gets it. And we're just looking for those indicators along with other assessments, other observations that teachers make throughout across the board, phonics, writing, everything.
It's kind of like when you go to the doctors and they take your blood pressure, they check your heart, they do those universal screeners. And then if they hear or see something that could be an indicator, then that we do further. Like we use that core phonics and we use other assessments then um to help us really find out what's going on.
So so Jay, as of July first, we have to identify a universal screener for grades K through three. And we want to identify the universal. And we want to identify a universal screener that will identify all of those um components of reading that we talked about on Starz, Scarborough's Reading Road. And at this point, we feel that the DIBELS meets that. Um, it is on the approved list from the state. And it does address every area except for comprehension at the kindergarten and um grade one level. Because it's not developmentally appropriate.
But we would use other things like a decodable text, and teachers are, are, have always done a running record where they sit and listen to the child read, and they notate the mistakes that they're making and where they're struggling. So that will continue, but with a decodable text, so we'll get valuable information. Jay, did you have a follow-up question to that?
Yes, I, I just wanted to uh thank you for the clarification um about that. And then I don't want to get ahead of what may be uh in the, in the rest of the presentation, but, you know, we talk about the, the new deadlines from the state. And I'm just curious, um, so the universal screener uh goes in by July first. And I understand that in their wisdom, they've selected six publishers for the reading curriculum. Um, so I'm just, I'm just curious, um, are we looking at um, uh, you know, trying some of those other
We ask each company to send them, but actually I've had parents of children with dyslexia and other, other professionals, including the CAPS, you know, heads, Fran, we're Benowitz, who sat on the panel. And not one of those, they felt was really um, as valuable as what we're doing in creating our model curriculum and teaching authentically and giving teachers the training. So they're more like a basal textbook with, you know, if you're in third grade, I think Judy Moody is one of the stories, and the whole classroom is Judy Moody, and I don't see any phonics in there at all. So I really have concerns of an HMH publisher, some publishers, if you find out who's gonna be making a lot of money. You know, but I am, for my own sake, taking a look at it. And I haven't paid a dime for them, but I, you know, they have shared with me, and I have a sample here that, um, yeah. No, I don't think-
Does that answer, Jay, does that answer your question?
Yeah, if you'll just indulge me one more thing. I, I've been trying to keep quiet so as to not interrupt the flow. But uh, my concern is, you know, given the number of districts who are applying for waivers, is the state um considering uh going back and, and reviewing? Have you heard anything um from the state on, on reviewing uh their, their sort of their decision to just go with these six publishers?
So um, one of the concerns both Fran Ribinowitz and I have is that the same group that rolled out CT set, sets abysmally. PJ, what was?
PCG.
PCG, they are the, they are the group that they hired to do the reading waivers, so good luck with that one.
And is there a date?
No dates.
It was submitted in February, nothing?
No, there's no word.
No, but I mean, when the state of Connecticut wanted to have districts adopt those six.
No, they've been, put it off for a whole year. That went through legislation, so they've given themselves more time. So. And they say they will work with districts, you know, with waiver process. Um, so, like I said, I'm very proud of the work that our staff has done, and that's really the work that should have been done at the state level to really roll out a model curriculum like we have proposed. So I can't wait to show them.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify, I, I, you know, I, I chose the, the two of the best uh, you know, performing school districts. Um, the one I mentioned-
You didn't say New Canaan.
Yeah, I didn't say New Canaan. I went, I went with Darien, I'm so sorry.
That's all. But- I've been talking to them too.
Yeah, is giving the community a reference of what are, you know, what our community is like, how diverse it, our community is, the student body that we have, and who to really compare it to. And how we're doing, and when you do look at the, the data of, of the school districts that we are comparable to, you know, we're one of the top, which is just something that's excellent, and we need to recognize. I don't think the community understands that. And so that's what I was trying to bring up, um. So, thanks.
Don't, don't get into- But I'm always looking for improvement. So I'm really feeling that this is gonna really serve us well. We train these teachers really well, and we expect it. I do the walkthroughs, I get the master class training. And um, it's gonna be a heavy lift. The teachers are right, it's been a hard year for them, but they've actually come to me with some solutions that have been, um, wonderful.
Well, we have this time now to plan our PD days in the summer, and for when we return, those two days before school starts. So we'll have time to roll it out.
And TLI day, we'll focus on. I would recognize Becky.
I would, I will say, it's been a hard year, but it's been a rewarding year. Um, and, and things that we would maybe doing snippets here and there, it's solidifying and it's, it's spreading across the district, which is very um uplifting. I can tell you, I was, I did Hegarty as soon as we heard about it. Uh, and I did it through the pandemic. I literally videoed myself doing the Hegarty lesson, which is hysterical because you're staring at yourself in, in a computer monitor, and my students did that, and my, and the parents were, they loved it because they could put it on for their kids, and they're like, I learned a thing or two. And then when we came back to see that growth that the kids made with Hegery and, and explicit phonics, um, my kids this year are phenomenal, so it's gonna take some time for these kids to trickle up.
Right.
Um, that have these really solid foundations, but I think this work is exciting work. And it's positive work, and it's much needed work. And we're in it, we're in it. We are, Cory can attest to that too, that this is, this is good stuff.
Yeah, we're betting.
Especially with our littlest ones. I mean, my guys can tell you that OW and OU will both say the ow sound. You know, they can tell you what a diabraf is, they can tell you what a blend is, so it's, it's, it's the things that they're doing. And I know it's, it's, Andrea's heart is swelling with pride.
And then when they go to write, they'll use it.
This is kindergarten, you know, we're doing onset of rhymes and all sorts of things, and I have to say, it's my favorite part of the day. Um, and, and I hear them transfer this when they're writing. They're like, oh, wow, or it's an ow sound, and they go to our vowel valley and they find which one it could be, and so it, it is hard work.
What I am so impressed about is the, the amount of the teachers are excited. Like, when you, when you've got what you need to do your class and do it well.
And you know you're doing good work.
And when you know you can come to central office, and you can say, hey, things aren't going well, we need help, we need to do things differently, and we say, all right, so what is it you need? Boots on the ground.
Right, yeah.
I give you time.
And I did, I shared that book, Shifting the Balance with, with, um,
I bought it right away.
And I was like, you need to do this as a summer read.
Yeah.
And um,
Took it to the beach.
It is one of those books that really spoke to me as a teacher. And I knew, you know, it's something, you know, when you read something, you know that this is where we need to go, and, and it's exciting, it's an exciting fact.
Thank you. Thank you, Becky.
I, I just wanted to-
Oh, please.
I just wanted to say, I really appreciate it's coming out and hearing from them, because that's when, you know, you wanna know.
Right. Look what it did for us, right? Well, so we've done coffee chats at all of our schools with our teachers, we're gonna do a coffee chat with our juniors and seniors at high school, where we just sit and listen. And I've had parents come in to see me, and I, I think we're gonna do a coffee chat here and just send it out to parents and say, come join us. All we'll do is listen, just tell me your story. Because I won't know until I've heard the story from parents.
Jay.
Yeah, I, I also want to say thank you to everyone who came out tonight. I think one of the misconceptions, um, and probably I had it, and maybe some of our parents do, is that somehow our reading program is monolithic. That there's just this one method that the state doesn't approve of because it's not on the list that they've approved, you know, this week. Uh, but in reality, there are so many more pieces to it. Um, and obviously, each one of them uh is evolving. And so um, I appreciate this uh peek at how it all works. And uh, I'm very glad that the teachers are, you know, directly involved with um, with the evolving curriculum. Uh, it's not being just handed down from on high. Um, and I hope the state will come around and understand the value uh of, of their work.
Thank you, Jay. That was a nice, that's a nice summary.
So, before I say motion to adjourn, let me just say that I learned tonight that the DIBELS is in the details.
And?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, William is a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Motion is carried. Good night, folks. Please remember Wednesday at seven.
Yes. Our TM did our budget through.